So I will call this meeting to order and we will start with the salute to the flag. So then roll call, please, Mrs. Long.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Elling.
Present.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Knopf.
Here.
Mr. Coke. Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
I'm here virtually. Wish I could be there physically, but that wasn't in the cards.
Mrs. Smith.
Present.
Six members present. Do we have any public members signed up to speak now?
Okay. So. We are here to interview for the candidates for the vacant seat in Region 6, which includes Lock Haven 2rd Ward, Lock Haven 3rd Ward, and Allison Township. Um, so, Mr. Dietrich, are you ready?
Yep, I'll say.
Um, let's start, even though we just did roll call, let's just start with a, with an introduction.
Hi, I'm Jim Knopf. Everyone calls me Bud, so I'll be Bud. I'm from Renovo area, District 9, or Region 9, I guess it'd be.
And I'm Jeff Johnston, and I'm representing the Pine Creek, McIlhatten area down that way.
Great.
Tracy Long, Board Secretary.
Tracy Smith, Board President. I Woodward Township, Lock Haven 1st Ward, and I always forget, and I feel bad, but Farnsville.
Superintendent Jacqueline Martin.
Okay, right, yes.
Roger Elling, Ward 4 and 5, Lock Haven.
Okay, yeah, good to meet you.
Hi, Elizabeth Lynch. I have represent Mill Hall Borough and Lamar Township.
Okay. And what about Bo?
Bo?
Yes, good evening. I'm Bo Miller. Some of you may know me as Boyd, but I don't normally use that name. I represent Region 8, which is Castania Township, Boligal Township, and Flemington Borough.
Okay.
Okay, so Dr. Martin's going to be asking you the questions. Just do the best you can. Some might be a little specific to board that you may not be familiar with. Just, you know, let us know.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, Mr. Dietrich, the first question is, tell us about yourself, your background, and what has led you to apply for this board vacancy?
In, in general, you're looking for like resume type items. I've been retired for approximately eight years, almost exactly eight years, actually. Prior to that, I worked mostly for engineering type companies. I began my career in engineering company and ended in an engineering company. I specifically built components for like nuclear power plants and some like robotic trains that used linear induction motors. I was involved with an aspect of training and adult education throughout my career. It was not the focus of my career, but I was involved with that. I frequently had customers come to visit me from all around the world to learn what I had in my head, because at the time I had something, you know, knowledge that they needed. My, my wife and I, we took about, I'm going to say maybe like four or five years to move back to this area. We have lived here off and on in the past. My daughter was born here at the Lock Haven Hospital, for example. My grandparents were from here. My parents grew up here. I have a long family history in this region, which was the reason why we desired to move back to this area. We know that this time it will stick. The last time we tried moving here was about 20, 25 years ago. Spent a few years here and had to move away, you know, because of a job opportunities. This time, though, we know it'll stick. In, in general, I'm, I'm here. Throwing my hat into the, or my name into the hat to hopefully help out with the school boards. Because I, I'm interested, I have time. I believe that in general to the school system that we all have the same general objective, which is to have the children of this community graduate from this school system with the tools that they need to compete and succeed, you know, as they continue with their adult lives. I think that everybody here can probably agree to that, and I, I believe that it is important, and I, I, one of the things that I've been doing over the past couple of years is trying to get more involved in the local community and help out as, as I can. And yeah, I, I recognize that there are needs of the community versus needs of, you know, the students and needs of the school district, and there are laws that we have to follow, and rules and regulations have to be followed, and all of those things have to be balanced between the needs of the community and those required by the, by the school in regard to laws, rules, and regulations. And I know that's a difficult thing to sort out, but I'm, I'm willing to help, you know, with that, and I, I hope that I can make a contribution to, to lend a hand.
What particular experiences and skills have prepared you to serve as a Keystone Central Board Member?
Well, me specific to this community, I, I do have some experience as a member of the Lock Haven City Planning Commission. Requires some public interfacing. I'm also a member of the City Historic District Committee. Throughout my career, I have been put into a variety of leadership positions. I have had to interact with many people from many backgrounds, many, I would say, even probably thousands of people over the course of my career. Detailed face-to-face level. And learned how to interact with many individuals who have a variety of perspectives on, on life. And helped to lead them to common solutions, whether it was one of my customers who needed a new pump for nuclear power plants, or a new customer who needed a motor, like I mentioned, for a robotic electric train, or whether it was a group of folks who were coming in from halfway around the world to learn how to do design by analysis and manufacturing and test for one of my, one of my products. Yeah, I, I've, I have been faced with, I guess the point is a variety of situations with a huge number of people, and I think that in that regard, I can probably make a contribution here. In this, in this type of role.
Okay, so this next question you may have already answered to some degree, but I'm going to ask it since it's on the paper. So you decide how you want to answer it, okay? In what other school districts, community organizations, or activities have you been involved?
Oh, right, well, like I said, the, you know, the Lock Haven City Planning Commission, Historic District Committee. In the past, I have been asked to be a leader in other community organizations as well. Not that I've requested. This is a little bit unusual, and I'm putting my name into that hat, you know. Typically, it's something that I'm asked to do, so this is a little bit different situation in that regard. But yeah, I think th- those would be good reasons, recent examples.
Sorry, the tech guy was getting back. Apologize. What do you believe is the role of a school board member, and how does that role differ from the superintendent in administration?
My belief is that the school board members are here to represent the community and the needs and desires of the community. The, the superintendents, we might believe the responsibility there, replying in the day-to-day administration of the school district. School board members, we, we are elected, in my case, like maybe appointed due to a vacancy. But at a fundamental level, it would be our job to try to represent the best we can the interests of the local, local community and tie that into what is required by law, what is required by budget and those sorts of things at, at the school district. Of course, day-to-day operations, I would believe, in administrations, the expertise of the superintendent.
What issue or issues motivated you to serve on the Board of Education?
Well, it's a desire to help with the local community. In this case, I, I, it's something I care about. It's something that's I, I feel that I could, a place where I feel that I could make a contribution. I've not to me, it just is something that feels right as far as doing it, lending a hands, and I, I found that sometimes it's a good idea to step up and take on a role or take on a job that maybe is not necessarily recognized as sort of, maybe something sort of like a thankless type of role possibly. When, when, when I have the opportunity and the time and hopefully the skills to help to make a little bit of a contribution, you know, it's, it's just kind of the way I feel about it.
You're selected to serve on the board. What will be your top priority?
Well, like I said, I, I, the, the, the first thing would be to learn. And you will find that I will ask some maybe questions that sound stupid possibly, but I found that I'm in a mode of learning that that's just the way it goes. So learn exactly what is happening and do the best I can to, like I said, represent the deeds and desires of the community relative to what is required, actually, with, with the school, the school district.
Just so you know, there's no stupid questions.
Yeah, I, I will.
If you're asking it.
You don't have to worry.
One of us probably has already asked that question, so.
I will ask. I don't mind if the question sounds stupid. And, and I'm okay with that. I, I'm also just sort of personalized by doing, so.
Well, you get a lot of doing now.
Yep.
We've all been there. We were all rookies at one time. Nobody comes onto this board being an expert, so don't worry about that.
That's true.
So the next question is, what do you see as the major issues facing public education today? You only have to pick one or two.
Well, I, I think that at a, at a fundamental level, what really matters is, like I said before, for the students to graduate with the tools that they need to compete and succeed as they move forward with their lives. And I getting to that objective requires obviously lots of compromises. Possibly. But, but I, I believe that if the students are provided with, what, what would be important would be providing the students with a, you know, safe environments, an environment in which they can learn and have the opportunity to learn. I believe that is important. And in the ends, the rest of the stuff is kind of I don't want to negate a lot of the issues that are out there, but it tends to be details and background noise that sort of interferes with the main objective.
What do you perceive to be the greatest strengths and weaknesses of our school district?
Of this school district? From what I have seen, the, the community does appear to be involved in the school district. I remember when this facility was built back in the 1990s, when it opened, I went on a tour of it. I remember I was doing that. Yeah. You know, it's, the school district has become kind of customized. I mean, we have, there's schools, the schools in the Renova area, right? And then there's the school in the Sugar Valley area, the, the charter school. And then there, you know, there's this high school here, and schools that we have. I, I, I believe that in, in the ends, the community kind of came together and kind of drove things into the direction that was appropriate and correct to meet the needs of our school system. That's a positive thing, I think, that in the end, everybody here is able to do that sort of thing.
Any weaknesses?
Weaknesses? Well, I, I'm not sure that I can think of anything specific. There isn't probably a lot of money to go around to support maybe a lot of the programs that are would be beneficial maybe for the students, you know, like, like, for example, like a band program. I don't know that we have a really big band program. I think at one time we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
I got a, like, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I, I think, I think that maybe lack of resources and funds is maybe a weakness of the district. I'm not sure how that, this is something that could be solved very easily, but I would see, state that as a, as a weakness of this district and probably others similar to it.
So the next question follows up on that weakness. How do you believe the school district should address the greatest weakness?
Well, I, I mean, off the top of my head, not knowing whether or not it's possible. Are there grants or private foundations who can provide money to the school district like this? There are private foundations out there. We are kind of a, kind of a rural school district, and I think the second poorest county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that might qualify us for some grant opportunities that other districts don't qualify for. I, I, I'm not sure. I, I mean, this is something I would throw out there.
Okay. How does this, how does the school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden?
Well, that, that, that's a very tough question, and I think that's something that probably is dealt with all the time by the school board here. I, I, I think that, like I said, there's rules, laws, regulations that have to be met. I think that there's community needs and desires that need to be met as well. Well, and we need to decide what, how those two things mesh together. An example, hypothetical example would be there are some rural school districts who have eliminated their football programs to save money, right? That's okay for them, but my belief is here, that's not okay. The community believes in our football program, and that's not something that will go away. So here, in this community, you know, that's something that would not be an option, you know, so it's, it's those sorts of discussions and conversations just need to happen. We need to keep in mind what is important to the community versus what, what can, what can be cut from the budget and programs.
Okay, well, budget's a key word because that's where we're going next. What are your thoughts on the current and the proposed budget for our school district?
I, I mean, I haven't followed it in detail. At a, at a, a high level, I know that a lot of people worked very hard to come up with the current budgets and meets the budget, so the taxes do not have to be increased. I recognize that we're in a mode right now where we have a high level of inflation, and it will become more and more difficult in the coming several years to make budgets work. At, at corporations, the philosophy in regards to budget is usually when money needs to be found, across the board cuts are made, you know, 10% of employees are eliminated from every department, and there are no exceptions. 10% of the money needs to be eliminated from budgets with no exceptions. That, that's not really possible in a school district, you know, in this type of envi- environments. So it's, it's always difficult. It's just a difficult road, and it, it always depends, you know, what is important.
What changes should be made at the state and local level regarding public education?
I'm not sure exactly how to respond to that one. Changes in regard to policies, in regard to local and state public education. I mean, off the top of my head, I would say something like, at the state level, more funding going into public education or a different, different scheme for funding public education might be useful. At a local level, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly, and like I said, the formal communication and negotiations. At the state level, of course, more funding flowing into the schools is always a good thing.
Could you support a board decision that you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Yes, I, I absolutely could. Part of life is adhering to, you know, the majority decisions, and that's part of, that's the way this works. That, that just to be more specific, like specific regard to the Historic District Committee, that happens sometimes, and regarding to the Planning Commission, that happens sometimes, and it's, it's important. My view would be that I'm here to fulfill a role, and if the majority decision is something that I don't agree with, it's still my responsibility to follow through with that and fulfill my role. That, that is something I could stronger.
Most recent questions. It's not, do you remember what it was? Because I'm just now noticing it's not there. Write it down. Say we made an edit to the document.
We did?
Oh, yeah.
Are we looking for the, the 14th question? I have it in front of me if, for some reason, you don't have it.
No, we have the 14th question. I made an edit into the Google Doc after the facility meeting based on input from board members, and I'm guessing that Tracy Long had the questions printed prior to that edit.
She asked me, and I told her I didn't think there was an edit, so that was probably my fault because I didn't see that.
I think this amended number 13, I think.
Yeah, Elizabeth's remembering she's going to write it down. It was a good one. So with your experience, if a team doesn't agree, or if you disagree with a fellow board member on a particular topic, whether that's in a committee or at the board table, how do you approach handling that conflict between yourself and the other board member?
Well, I, I, I listen, and I, I would have to go back to my, my, my management training, I guess, and tools that were provided to me there. But, but in general, I found that it is important to listen to the other person's perspective, let them speak, and if I feel that I can persuade them otherwise, try to do so. It isn't always possible to do so. That, that is okay. When I used to lead teams of people and had large groups of folks working for me and became with, or had, had disagreements, it's a crazy thing, but I, I kind of ran it like an pirate ship. We would, we would vote whether I agreed or not, we would move forward with the direction that was decided. And unless we were breaking some regulation or something we had to follow, because the NRC required us to do something specific or whatever, you know, we, we would move forward with a group decision. I would try my best to persuade and present my point of view, but i- in the end, it's not worth, you know, grudges or negativity, that, that sort of thing, long-term.
Okay. And the final question, our board has several subcommittees of the board, including Finance, Policy, Personnel Negotiation, Facilities, Curricular Co-Curricular, Safety, and Charter Ad Hoc. If selected to serve on this board, are there any of these committees that would interest you?
What was the list again, so?
Yep, Finance.
Right.
Policy, Personnel Negotiations, Facilities, Curricular Co-Curricular, Safety, and Charter Ad Hoc.
What's Charter? Is that like the Charter School stuff or?
Yeah, we have a brick and mortar charter school in our district, along with several cyber charter schools across the state that students may or may not attend. And we have, because this board has the, holds a charter agreement with the charter school. Those are five-year agreements. They're responsible for renewing any requests for a charter. And so there's a Charter Ad Hoc Committee that was formed a couple of years ago in order to address the negotiations with the Sugar Valley Charter School, and that group stays in regular connection with the goings-on and making sure that the provisions of the charter are being followed.
Very good.
So off the top of my head, I would say maybe something like, like that one, maybe something like safety, maybe something like facilities. If you all think that I can provide a contribution in regard to finance, I'm happy to do so. I have a lot of experience in that area, but as far as where my interests lie, yeah. I've been there, I've done that. It's okay, though, I can help.
Well, well, Mr. Dietrich, we would, we would love to become energy self-sustaining, so if, if we can get our own nuclear reactor to power the district, and you can make that happen, I, I, I would be in favor of you serving on the Facilities Committee.
So, so, something.
Well, I guess that that's all the questions that we have at this time. Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, thank you, yeah.
We've, board members have had a chance to add questions, so.
I just have a ton of follow-up. You said your your daughter was born here, did she go to school here?
No, she did not. We moved away before she started school. Yeah, she went to a preschool, she went to a Catholic school in the Pittsburgh area. And then she went to. For the rest of her time, she went to a public school in Pittsburgh.
And did you go to school here by any chance?
No, no, I did not. I went to the same public school with my daughter. My parents went to school here, like grandparents and.
Well, I knew you said your parents. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members have any follow-up questions?
How long have you been back here, Dave?
Well, let's see, I think officially like a year and a half. We started the move like about four years ago. And I spent a good bit of time here, but officially on paper, it was like a year and a half ago. We've always had a house here in Clinton County. Spent a lot of time, a lot of time here, here, either living off and on, like I said, living off and on or. Anytime we had free time, we were here, you know, essentially.
Now, I'm going to ask you something and I can tell she's probably going to start freaking out because I'm the one that says what I think. All right, so. Whenever we got your biography. All right, I started kind of trying to look up, you know, who you were and stuff like that. And I noticed that there is, I think, I couldn't find any social media, anything. Does that deal with the fact of what you used to do?
Yeah, I don't have any personal social media, anything. That's true.
That's a good thing for you.
That was against the rules. Continued with that. I won't find any for my wife either.
Okay, well, I I was just, you know, I'm trying to find out a little bit about you other than what's right here. And, you know, I couldn't and I'm like, okay, well, how long has he been here then? So, you know, I'm just trying to get, I like your answers, all right, honestly. You know, you seem like a really good guy. I just, you know, trying to dig into you and. You know, do my due diligence.
And Mr. Ealing, I I will comment and say that I I did run Mr. Dietrich through. Every background check mechanism I could that's legal for me to do so. I I did not run him through NCIC or anything like that because that would not be approved. I found no red flags. Is it from from my standpoint, this dude's clean.
I I'm glad to hear that. All right.
All right, so.
Oh, we just could, just want to ask Dave. One thing that you'll find if you are selected for this is that there's. A lot of time that goes into it and I just wanted to make you aware of that and if if that's. I I think being retired, you probably, that won't be an issue for you, but but there is. It's it's deceiving because once you get on, then there are a lot of committee meetings and a lot of things that.
It seems like that. I mean, I've read and followed it in the newspaper. It seems like there are a lot of people spending a lot of time. I I figured. That's not, that's not a problem.
It is, it it is very time-consuming if you.
I'm not on like this particular schedule.
Well, I I thought, I thought as much.
Feel like sleeping till noon.
We we honestly don't do much before noon because there are some of us who unfortunately are. Still employed because we need to be, we're not all retired. So a lot of this happens in the evenings, but there are some committee meetings that do happen during the day.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, great.
All right, so that's the end of the interview. Can I have a motion for adjournment for this portion of the meeting?
I'll second.